Good afternoon and welcome to the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three city council work session. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel twenty-one, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the public webcast and meeting materials webpage. And thank you again for joining us. And with that, I call this work session to order and I will turn it over to the Assistant City Manag-- no, I'll go directly over to the auditor.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor and Council for having us here. This is our annual presentation of our annual report from two thousand and twenty-two. So we'll do a quick overview of the report from the Auditor's Office and then we'll switch it over to members of our civilian review board who came here to present their part of the report. So I want to just do a quick introduction because you haven't been able to meet everybody on the team yet. So Lindsay Foltz and Rob Eller are the Associate Auditors. They came on in January of two thousand and twenty-two and have helped me so much. So I'll talk more about that. Beatrice Otero Hernandez, who is here, she's our translation. Translation? That's it. Yeah, thank you. I can't take credit for that title. Yes, and then Carolyn Williams and Jose Cortez are here from the civilian review board. They'll come up in a minute. So. Am I? Wonderful. Okay. Not intuitive. Okay, so our mission and purview of the Auditor's Office is to provide accessible, safe, impartial, and responsive intake system for complaints against EPD employees. We are working, we work to ensure accountability, fairness, transparency, and trust in the complaint system through the intake classification, auditing, and adjudication process of the complaint system. And then our other significant task is supporting and staffing the civilian review board that monitors the work of our office and the work of IA, reviews complaints, and provides policy recommendations. I apologize to EPD and the Police Commission. So quick, one of the things I always talk about with our oversight system are the three things that I find to be extremely important for our success, and one is our independence. So you can see that depicted here. We are outside of the rest of city government. We operate independently and we report directly to you fine folks. The other two things being that our funding is protected under the ordinance and then also that we have our access protected under the ordinance. Those two are, those three together make our system function as it does. So the functions of our office, and this comes directly from City Code, we do complaint intake. We are the intake point for all complaints of EPD employees. That's anybody who ends up reporting to the chief, so sworn and non-sworn. We are the intake point for community complaints about any of those folks. We also are the intake point, we're an optional intake point for internal complaints. Those can go through the Police Department, but ultimately they do come through our office for classification. So next being classifying complaints. I'll talk more about the various classifications for complaints, but every complaint that comes through is subject to a preliminary investigation and then classification to make sure it's dealt with in an appropriate way. One point that has, Mark and I have both made over the years, is that this classifying process has taken a lot more, has become a lot more intensive, I guess, over the years. As we have more body worn video, in-car video, we take it very seriously, our responsibility to look at all of the evidence available to us before we classify anything. So Lindsay and Rob have taken on the lion's share of that work over the last year, looking at all the video, police reports, dispatch records, radio traffic, whatever we can ask for, whatever is pertinent to that initial classification. And I want to thank also EPD staff for always being responsive when we ask for, for access to that information. We then monitor investigations. So depending on the severity of the, of the complaint, it could be a line supervisor speaking with the reporting party, speaking with the involved employee, then writing a memo and closing it out. Those are our lowest level. And then up to taking part in interviews with involved employees, working with IA to ensure a thorough investigative process, that all reasonable investigative steps are taken. We also, if there's a criminal investigation, we will be kept apprised of how that's going and then follow up to see if there's any additional administrative investigation that should take part after that. We also make recommended adjudications. The chief is the final adjudication authority for complaints about his employees. Obviously, I guess, I don't know if that's obvious, but it's what our system is. So we review the complaint or the investigation, we make a recommendation on whether the behavior alleged occurred, whether it was a violation of policy or not. We also make recommendations on policy and training. But whether that's through the Police Commission or directly to command staff at EPD, we report out to the community. I'll talk more about that later. And again, supporting the CRB. So last year, we had thirty, three hundred and thirty-five complaints received last year. We also reviewed one hundred and fifty-nine reportable uses of force. We review every use of force. And that includes, again, video reports, everything else, just to make sure there's nothing that warrants a closer look. We also do, we review most shows of force. That's, it becomes to be a workload issue at that point, but we review a lot of shows of force. At least read the reports to see if, again, if we need to do more. We also looked at ten vehicle pursuits last year. There were, let's see, seventy-one complaints dismissed. The reasons for dismissal are outlined in City Code and civilian review protocols. Includes outside jurisdiction, with somebody who doesn't work at EPD, not timely, as provided in City Code, if there's an alternate remedy, things like that. We had two complaints administratively closed. That means that we didn't, typically that means we didn't have enough to move forward with an investigation. So we close it, and then if we ever get more information, we can look at that again. Fourteen percent of our complaints last year were internally generated, which is a slight increase from previous years. Never quite know the reason for that, but it's always something that our office has seen as helpful, that folks at EPD will file complaints through our office. Most of our complaints are filed over the telephone and then about a quarter through our previous online complaint portal, and I'll talk again about that. All but two of our complaint investigations remained or were closed as of the writing of the report. So only two remained open, and our average time to close a complaint last year was thirty-one days, which was significantly faster than in two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you, Rob and Lindsay. To be clear. So this is sort of how our investigations go. They come in, we do a preliminary investigation. As I said before, we have service complaint, policy complaints. Those are sort of the low level. So-and-so was rude to me. I don't like that they didn't come to a non-injury accident. Those types of things, those are very common. Inquiry is, it comes in and we kind of, it seems like a question or just a, we don't understand how this was dealt with. So what do we do? So we take a closer look at that. That also goes to the line supervisor typically. Incident review is a classification that we created in tandem with EPD in two thousand and sixteen to sort of hold, hold a place for complaints that we're not quite sure what to do with. So in an incident review, we will do everything up to interviewing the employee to see if we can get a really full picture of what might have happened. Most of those get closed out as incident reviews. Some of them get elevated to allegations of misconduct and some of them just get closed out or downgraded even in some cases. And then allegations of misconduct and allegations of criminal conduct. These are the serious misconduct ones. Criminal conduct would go out to a outside agency to do that criminal investigation, get reviewed by a prosecutor. Allegation of misconduct is investigated by IA with the assistance and participation of our office. So this shows, every complaint can have more than one specific allegation in it. So this looks at, we had four hundred and fifty-seven specific allegations last year. Two hundred and twelve of these were service complaints, which was an increase from two thousand and twenty-one. Performance was the most common subclassification, followed by service level and then courtesy. I will say that's, it's an increase in service level complaints, and I should say service level is sort of typically, I called and no one showed up. I called and I wasn't satisfied with, with the service I received, that kind of thing. So that, that was a jump. We had forty-one incident reviews. Most of them looked at performance and conduct and then some use of force. And then thirty-nine specific allegations of misconduct, and then six allegations of misconduct that were related to allegations of criminal conduct, sort of under that umbrella. That's fewer specific allegations than were in two thousand and twenty-two, as you can see there, but still elevated compared to our five-year trends. These are the types of specific allegations of misconduct that we looked at. So you can see the most common were performance, judgment, vehicle pursuit policy and taser use. This is a slightly, I think the, the way we summed it up in the report was a previous version, so this has been corrected in our, in our more recent version of the report, but the figures are the, are the correct figures. And then, oh, so that previous slide is not necessarily sustained. Those are just the ones we investigated. This is, we had twenty of our thirty-nine specific allegations were sustained last year for a nearly fifty percent sustained rate. I think that that shows the robustness of our preliminary investigation process, that we, we don't open these investigations unless we truly think there's something there to look at. We also, as I said, we had two complaints that, that had criminal conduct alleged. One of them was administratively closed. We didn't have enough to move forward with that investigation. The other one ended with five specific allegations, of which these were they. And adherence to laws, I should say, was non-sustained in that case. So we are allowed to report on disciplinary trends. We do not report on any specific discipline from any specific case. We also do not make any recommendations on discipline, but we do talk about trends. So that's where we land here. Fourteen employees were found to have committed the twenty-three specific instances of, of misconduct. And this was the discipline that was received. I do want to just note quickly, there were no deadly force incidents by EPD in two thousand and twenty-two, which is always helpful in a lot of ways. I will, state law also changed in two thousand and twenty-two to change the requirements for that, for the deadly force investigation that follows use of deadly force. So I haven't actually been able to see the results of that change yet, just because we didn't have one in two thousand and twenty-two, and I haven't seen the most recent county infit investigation. So I'll report back on that when I have seen it. Twenty-two outcomes, our administrative outcomes. So the most significant thing was that we got two Associate Auditors onboarded. I finally had auditing assistance. It was lovely. They started January fourth and I felt like the skies opened up. It was great. Jennifer, yeah, it was, it was a rough time. So I, we had successful onboarding, training, and integration of our Associate Auditors. I really value having two different folks who, who work on these, the auditing of the investigations with me. They bring diverse background, diverse perspectives. We bounce ideas off of each other in a really constructive way, and I think it improves the services of our office substantially. Our efficiency is significantly improved and, you know, morale is just great. Supporting the CRB, the CRB met nine times. They're going to talk about their stuff, so I'm not going to go into that too much. But we also implemented improved onboarding for new CRB members and exit interviews for folks who are leaving the CRB, which is not something that our office had done previously, and I found very helpful. Let's see, I came and talked to you all a lot last year. We talked about, I came with city manager and municipal court judge to discuss how to respond to the recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee. That was in February. I came and presented on the history and structure of our office in May of last year. And then just a final, I can't recall, Sarah, or I reported on this, but we did do a follow-up meeting. We offered a follow-up meeting with members of the Ad-Hoc Committee in July of last year to discuss how that all went. The other things that we worked on, the other items of significance, I guess, were, there's a whole lot of community outreach that we listed in your, in the reports. I went and presented to Lane County Public Defenders. That was a wonderful opportunity that I was, I've been looking to do for a while. I think I did two or three talks at the law school, becoming more involved with Nicole, working on the, last year over on the Communications Committee for the National Association of Civilian Oversight. Just doing a lot more outreach and trying to get the word out about our office and our model. We also worked on our public portal, so we secured a online public portal for folks to file complaints through. That went live this year, but last year was the work of narrowing down a vendor and figuring out which system would work, and ISD was hugely helpful in that effort. And then we also moved offices to a more secure, more comfortable space that also includes a meeting space for the CRB. I invite you all to come visit if you haven't already, but that was a, that was a big lift as well, and Facilities was incredibly supportive and helpful in that. We moved in November of last year. Our goals for coming years are, continue to work on our accessibility. I think moving our office and improving our online complaint portal have been significant changes and ones that have been working on for a long time, so I'm looking forward to continuing with that work. We're also working on DEI work in our office. We have gone through a few different variations of how best to implement DEI improvements to our office without, with a eye on finances, frankly, and how do we do this in a really responsible way? And it kind of fell to the wayside with all of the accessibility work we were doing last year. So actually, after we wrote this report, Lindsay met with the folks from the Equity and Community Engagement Office, and they're going to work with us on a DEI audit of our processes, which will be financially responsible, and hopefully I'll be able to report to you on that next year, or if not sooner. Continue to work on our core competencies, our thorough preliminary investigations, our thorough monitoring, outreach, and then our ongoing collaboration around how to improve deadly force investigations. Early intervention is still a topic that we're working on. I think come to realize that it's more of a focus for the Police Department to be working on their own employees, and I have ideas and I'm happy to give those, but I think it's really, I don't want to overstep too far into that. And then continuing to come back with potential improvements to the, to the civilian oversight system. That's our last one. And then we have the gratitude slide. Thank you to you all, folks, my staff, CRB, Police Commission, HRC, Ad-Hoc Committee, EPD staff, especially Internal Affairs, they're amazing, CMOs, city attorneys, central services, everybody. So with that, I was going to turn it over to CRB. Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
Carolyn, do you want me to do slides? Okay, so I'm going to introduce Carolyn Williams is the Chair of the CRB and Jose Cortez is the newly elected, new wishfully-elected Vice Chair of the CRB, and they're here to report on their work from last year.
Good. Thanks for having us. All right. Can you hear me? Is this working? So I think the main thing is that we need to express a lot of gratitude to the Auditor's Office, and I think that they do an exemplary job of, of what they do. One thing that has come out after the Ad-Hoc Committee and kind of after the two thousand and twenty police, everything that led to the ad hoc, is that Eugene has definitely held up as a standard for how police oversight can be, and I think I'm proud to be part of it. And I think Jose also is.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we, Carolyn and I are on the same page, and we believe that trust and accountability are two sides of the same coin. And, you know, we're invested in the, in the work here because we believe communication and transparency are important civic values, and this is a generally a good thing for the people of Eugene. So we're proud to work on this committee and to work with Leah and her office.
So, oh, you can go back. I kind of hadn't even touched on that stuff yet. That's okay. Our, our role as a CRB is to just oversee what the IA and the Auditor's Office do in their investigation. So we're not part of the investigations until they're closed. And we, we look at everything that they get to look at. We don't see discipline, but we see the whole, we get all of the body cam footage, we get all of the police reports, we get everything that they see. So we are able to just kind of be the civilian eyes of the process to make sure that they are doing what they should be doing and that we communicate that to the public by having public meetings. And we provide community perspective from a lot of different perspectives. We don't, I don't know if any of us have a law enforcement background, so we are, and we come from all different walks of life, so it's a, it's a good diverse group. This year is really nicely diverse. I appreciate how you all have selected the members over the years, too. Now you can go. Oh, and I was getting ahead of myself. Yeah, so we have seven members. You all appoint us. We have three-year terms, and then we can be reelected or reappointed three times, so nine years is our cutoff time, although I think we can come back after a break if we want to. So we've had nine members over the past, in two thousand and twenty-two, because we switch over, as you know, in, in July, so you can see them. We met nine times. We had eight public meetings. One of our meetings was just a training, so that wasn't a public meeting. We don't need to meet publicly if it's just a training, so we accept public comment. We don't receive much public comment. I don't think we did at all in two thousand and twenty-two. They were all virtual. And I'm very glad that they have a new office, because now I'm getting ahead of myself. For two thousand and twenty-three, we've been meeting in person, hybrid, and that's been great. You can see what kind of trainings we had. It's, we get to kind of choose what the training is. So if there's something that we're interested in or something comes up in a case and we want to hear more about it, then the next month, we can request that we have a training on that topic. And if we don't have anything, then they always provide some interesting topics. We reviewed fourteen cases. And you already went over with those. So we follow the process that they do. The first thing we look at is complaint and taking classification. So we say whether or not we agree with how it was classified. This can lead to some discussions, and a lot of times the Auditor's Office will bring cases to us to say, like, this would be an interesting one to discuss. And it often is because they had, maybe there was discussion between them and the IA or, you know, between the office of what, how it should be classified. So it's good to get kind of our feedback to see if we agree or if we would have done it differently. I think generally, we, we find it pretty.
Yeah, yeah, I think one of the, you know, as a, as a civilian, one of the important perspectives that I've gained and have looked to communicate with the people of Eugene is just how these, you know, allegations of misconduct, for example, are classified, and we don't always agree, which is a good thing. But we, we have tried as a group to select different kinds of cases that communicate, for example, you know, encounters with unhoused peoples, uses of force, so truthfulness cases, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not looking to ding anybody on, on something, but to, again, communicate that the people of Eugene's concerns about police and oversight are being heard and that they're being represented.
Yeah. So yes, we start with complaint and taking classification. We say whether or not we agree, and then we get to go over the whole investigation. So we get to listen to the interviews that take place with the independent, or the IA. All of the acronyms are too close for me, and it bothers me, but that's, that's another story. But we get to make sure that, that the sergeants are asking the questions that we'd want to have asked and that the auditor is jumping in if those questions aren't being asked, so we get to hear those. And then make sure that, that that's going appropriately.
One more thing to make sure that it's known publicly is that we've had a great working relationship with Sergeant Nelson and the EPD. I've been incredibly confident with the Internal Affairs Investigations, that they were transparent and fair, not just to the people of Eugene, but to also the officers who are working in really difficult civic conditions right now.
So that's, the next part is the investigation monitoring. And then we get a chance to kind of talk about the policies and procedures. So if we feel like, I usually ask a lot of questions at this point. I'm like, is this a normal thing that officers do? Is this within policy? What is the actual policy on, maybe not something that is being investigated, but other things. So we get a lot of talk about that. If we see a policy that we want to see changed, then we can have our liaison take that to the Police Commission, because we have a duly-appointed person in each, in that commission that's on the later side, but that's okay, stay there. And they can take that policy and, and talk about it with them, because we don't make any policy choices or anything. We can take a recommendation to them if we'd like. And then we talk about training, and that's usually just kind of a question and answer with the training. We usually have the training sergeant. We have IA there, so we can talk about, is this a training that this person missed, or how often is it happening? And we can make recommendations of that. And then what we do is we just go around the circle and we talk about whether or not we agree with the adjudication, and if it, if the chief and the Auditor's Office disagreed, then we would say who we agree with. It doesn't give any bearing on the adjudication, but it kind of gives some insight to the people who are doing the process, whether or not we feel like they're doing it appropriately and everything. And then we can have comments.
Yeah, I think I would invite anybody, all the council members to attend a meeting or view a meeting and see that this is a site where people of Eugene are having productive disagreements. And I think that's important, not just to model, but also to show, again, that we can disagree about things and everybody can benefit from that. So, I don't know, on top of the granular policy stuff, I think there is some kind of like communication that's happening with the people of Eugene, that there are representatives, they don't all follow one perspective, and that we have some kind of representation in oversight that's fair and balanced.
You went too far. Oh, no. So we do have one member who's dual-appointed on Police Commission. We also have a liaison with Human Rights Commission, so we hear about what's going on in those realms monthly. And in conclusion, we feel as a board that the investigations are thorough and complete. That is something that we say almost every month when we're talking about the, the investigation monitoring, that, that they're doing a wonderful job. And like I said, I don't think that they're asking, they're not asking questions that I wish that they would typically. That was a lot of negatives. They are. That was a lot of negatives. They are asking the questions that I want them to be asking, without any negatives, I'll put it that way. Um, definitely, we saw a huge increase in productivity and timeliness with the addition of Lindsay and Rob. That was one of my main complaints when I was here last summer, that, that we needed to have that happen. So I'm really happy that they have, because we're seeing it and we're, we're seeing cases close a lot more quickly. And it feels much better to, to review cases that are recent rather than cases that from, from two years ago. Because it seems almost like a moot point at some point, at some time. So now I'm glad we're not doing that. Um, the auditor reports are great, we like to hear those every month. And I think that, that continued transparency is helping the community, as Jose has mentioned before. And as Jose also said, the dedicated and thoughtful CRB. Um, when we onboard people, I like to point out that this is a really nice group to be a part of. So don't mess that up, I don't say it like that, but like, I, I try to, to stress that, that it is a really, um, congenial, is that the right word? We can, we can disagree in a nice way, so I, I like to build that into the onboarding, because I think that is really helpful. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, uh, thank you so much. I just wanna start by saying how, um, helpful I think it is to read the Auditor's Report and then the companion piece to, to read the CRB and to be able to see a little at, at a more specific level, the cases that you're looking at and how I appreciate looking through it, that diversity of cases, because I think as Jose said, um, it, it reflects a lot of different kinds of concerns that, that the community has uh, around the, around the effectiveness of police, the, the complaints that they have. So I really wanna applaud you and thank you for your service to the community and doing that work. And, um, and in, and in coming here and summarizing it for us. And with that, I'm sure I have counselors in the queue, so Alan and then Randy and then Emily.
So, uh, thank you for the, the report, thank you for your service on the, on the CRB. And premature, congratulations on your reappointment, both of you. And, uh, thanks to Michael James Garcia and, and Bill Whalen for their service that they put on and left. Uh, this, this, this last coming year, both of them served great, Michael was on the Police Commission and was an awesome addition to that and very thoughtful and, and sorry to see him actually leave the community, so. So thank you for all that. On your trainings that you had, um, what were your key takeaways that you guys got from the EPD school safety practices? I know that's forefront of people's minds on a constant basis, because of all the shootings that we have across the country. But what was your key takeaways and assessment of that?
I requested that training and it was after the, um, the, the Uvalde training or the shooting where the officers didn't go inside. So I was like, I wanna see, what is your policy? What do you do? Um, and I wanted to hear that from their, from their mouth. So that was, um, I was, I, I have been a teacher for the past 12 years also. So it's something that's on the forefront of my mouth, my mind, and I have children in the public school, so it's really important to me. And I know that in the past couple of years, we lost the School of Resource Officers, so I wanted to know how EPD was, was, was working with that. I came out of that feeling really confident that the response will be not what it was in Uvalde. I, I am confident that EPD will do what needs to be done. And I think, you know, we've seen stuff recently with police being called to schools and that response time has been quick. So I, I've, I've, I've been happy to see that in action. We also got to do a training this year, so it'll be on next year's training where we got to, Jose, you can speak to this, because you actually did the training. But we got to see, it was a virtual reality thing where, you wanna speak about it?
Yes, one of our trainings was a, um, a look and participation in, um, a, a virtual reality system that EPD is using for active shooter situations. Um, I also have a kid, a child at Ridge Lane Elementary, my wife is a teacher. So, um, you know, I, I, I went in there thinking that I would, I would do this and I would shoot a bad guy. And, um, I left thinking that, um, that's not the work for me, um, but also that we have training in place and situation that's effective because officers are. I, I was, I was an athlete as a child and we tried to train your body so that in situations, y- your consciousness is not thinking, your body is reacting and found and saw that that was extremely effective. Um, and that I could also check my perspective as a citizen who doesn't have to do that work. And, um, try to, try to maybe get a bit more humanistic perspective, um, on what it's like for workers. Um, since police officers are workers and, and that's part of their working conditions. What's, what that's like from my perspective in such a, you know, emotionally charged environment. Um, helped me come out of that and appreciate the work that EPD does, but also, um, maybe take the spice that leveled down a little bit on my comments and on my, you know, um, armchair quarterbacking.
That's good to hear and, uh, I'm glad that you guys have that confidence in that procedures, that's excellent. Kristy, can, can you have, this is related, but not directly to this, which is, can you have the chief respond to the latest couple of bomb threats that have happened at South Eugene 3 in a week, in a couple of weeks? Uh, and, and response to that. The next question I had was, I, I hope this is not what I, what it sounds like, the school to prison pipeline. Maybe it's just app.
I can offer some perspective on that. There's, um, Dr. Ed Madison is a journalist, a professor at UFO and he had done a documentary on, on the school to prison pipeline in Oregon. And so, um, for that training, and I want you guys to jump in, but we, we, they watched that documentary and we had discussion with Dr. Madison about what does this look like in Oregon? Just, i- it was, it was sort of a, it was definitely different than what we typically do for trainings, but I think it's always helpful to talk about current issues and, and how do we build, uh, empathy and understanding, so.
Yeah, I would say that was probably the least related to actual our job out of the training, because, you know, EPD doesn't have a whole lot to do with that. Um, but yeah, I agree, I think it's good to kind of just have a sense of what the law enforcement or, you know, defend or what is.
International narrative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, final comment is, um, Police Commission, Jennifer, I sit on it and Alan Lyman's our, our representative to the Police Commission from your group and he does a great job, so thank you for lending us him.
He loves that work, so thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I bet. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Randy and then Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and keep this short. Thank you, first of all, for the reports, I find them very helpful. And I kind of like having the two of them together, I think that that just gives a little more depth. Uh, I also appreciate the comment about not armchair quarterbacking. I've never been a police officer, but I know an emergency services work. It's really hard to understand what you're confronted with and how fast things can happen until you're there, uh, in, in the crosshairs. So I, I do appreciate that and I also think it's, it's a really important role you play, not only verifying that things are done correctly, but also a, as a kind of a, a not disinterested, but a third-party independent review of what's going on. I think it just helps perpetuate that credibility. The one question I do have, under the service complaint category, um, I know Leah, you mentioned, uh, a lot of that was associated with no one showed up. And I've, I've gotta say that that is, that's the single biggest complaint I hear from constituents that, uh, contact at least me about, with a, with a beef about the police is, hey, nobody showed up, nobody called me back. And I know a lot of that's with the continuing, um, call load, uh, we see it with police, we certainly see it with fire and EMS, uh, the same thing. The, the call volume continues to go up while our, our resources stay relatively flat or in some cases decline. And so that's, that's something I'm very interested in, um, the degradation to our response capability and response reliability. How's that trend looking from your perspective?
I agree with you. I mean, I, I think it feels, it's one of those anecdotally, it definitely feels like it's becoming a more prevalent complaint. It's interesting to me also, just as we do, well, as, as I watched, uh, EPD work on, um, having the appropriate tool for the, for the response, right? Um, we end up, I think, and I need to do an actual analysis on this, but my feeling is that we get more outside jurisdiction complaints because parks are being sent to handle things in the parks, right? Parking is being sent to handle parking, um, and that used to be all EPD isn't showing up, right? So, um, so I'm really interested to look at that more and have a, a statistical analysis work on that, um, because it does seem anecdotally, and again, I could just, I mean, look over the last few years, but our service level complaints are definitely on the upswing. Um, something else is in the, in the appendix B, you can see, um, I didn't highlight those out, but I, I mean, it's, it's a lot of complaints. I'm not saying you have to read all of those, but you can see sort of how those, um, how those pencil out.
Yeah, when you get that information back, would it be too much work just to kind of send us just a short note? So we kind of get a feel for that. I'd hate to have to wait a year to
Oh, absolutely.
Get a feel for, for what's going on there.
Yeah.
I, I think that's something we all need to be aware of and I think that's something in our communication to the public. We need to make sure our public is aware of too, that, hey, we're doing the best we can with the resources we have to work with. And, you know, we have a number of problems that are, as you're aware, they're very outsized for a community of our size, that contribute to tying up resources. So, um, that, that's really all I had at this, this time. I, I do think it was good work and I appreciate it. And, uh, I'll look forward to hearing my colleagues and hearing back from you.
Yeah, and I should say there are three areas that we're working on, sort of more in-depth reports right now. One is the service level increase, one is, um, search and seizure constitutional issues and one is pursuits. Because we have definitely noticed an upswing in those as well.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Thank you. Emily and then Matt.
Thank you so very much. Um, the report is very useful, but thank you for doing this job.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think it's really important to the community to have a department that's really there to listen to them and to have a place to report their complaints and concerns. I did not get through the whole list of every single complaint this year, but I find that actually really helpful because we hear complaints from people who don't get in touch with you. And I'm able to say, call, go online, these people are there to listen to you. But what I also think is helpful to know is that so many of them end after they're heard. You know, you don't hear again from the complainers. And I find that, that sometimes just hearing people, that's what they needed, to have that validated. So I really appreciate that. There was a lot of duplication of, of what you did and then again, at the beginning of the minutes and then finally to the gist of what yeah, the CRB said. Um, do you post the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as they're approved, they're posted.
I will try to remember to look at those, because as we said, when it's, it's more timely. I am very happy that you have more staff, I know you have been tremendously overworked. And that it's also, um, the results are right there. I, I think it's important for the people making the complaint, the people who have been complained against to have that go as quickly as possible rather than drag on and, and, and not feel paid attention to. Uh, I like the list of cases that were reviewed, I think it was a, a good cross-section. And they were the ones that had the most, woo, was, was this okay or not? I also appreciate that even though you know it's not gonna have effect on the discipline that your adjudication recommends are there with the chief and the, the other people in the, the list. So I like that. Um, I really don't have questions, I just wanna tell you what I like. Um, I wish people do that for me. And I find that here in council, we like each other, we are congenial. Our, our time where we get to eat together and talk about things that aren't about council, give us a good basis for our work. So I'm delighted to hear that you are also congenial and that you don't agree. Because if we always agreed and you always agreed, what's the point? Our, our community does have a bunch of differences, even as a whole, we look very similar. Beatrice, I'm really grateful to you for the, um, translation and interpretation and the reaching out to the Spanish speakers. They get left out too much and that makes me feel really good. I've gone over, I'm so shocked. That makes me feel really good. I think, I think that was most of it. Your dedication to improvement, thank you.
You do that so rarely, I just didn't wanna cut.
And she gets extra Allentime.
Uh, Matt and then Jennifer.
I was gonna say she was channeling her, in her, in her Allentime.
Only congenial away from the table.
I, uh, I, I wanna thank you for the, the presentation and, um, hone in on a couple of things, the complaints in particular, you had mentioned, uh, Leah, the, the classifying complaints have become a lot more intensive. Is that just because the body-worn cameras or are there other pieces that have added to the, um, the intensity of the classifying of complaints?
You know, that's a really good question. I mean, it's one of those things, I've been doing this a long time, you know, and, and when I started in 2010, it would come in and we'd listen to, to whoever the person was, we'd ask questions and we would just go with what we knew, right? We could ask for reports, but for the most part, we didn't have video, we didn't have any way forward. Um, video has been the most prevalent way that that's changed, for sure. That we can, we can have eyes on an interaction and it's not the only perspective, but it is a perspective that aids us substantially. Um, I mean, I think anecdotally, I think there's, you know, I, I don't know that it's necessarily increased. Some of our most complex complaints are from folks who may not be experiencing the same perception of, of what's going on that you and I would experience, right? Um, and so we're, I, I can't necessarily say that that's increased, but those are really complex to deal with because you have someone who is, who firmly believes that something has happened to them and there is not necessarily always evidence to back that up.
And you're reviewing video and audio, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
And which is informed from a certain point of view, which is, which is challenging.
Yeah.
What if, what could you or the civilian review board members, Carolyn and Jose, thank you for your service, are, are there any, um, suggestions you would make to our law enforcement partners about, um, improving the body-worn camera policy?
We've, we've made that suggestion many times. Um, sorry, I'm gonna jump in. We, we really appreciate when the body-worn camera is turned on and I, it's not a policy now, but it has been the chief is, has communicated that they do want the body-worn cameras on.
Oh, yeah, I think, um, no, you're not, you're, I never know what to expect with CRV members. I appreciate their perspective at all times. Um, I think, uh, the recommended, I will say that the thing that can happen sometimes is muting can make things difficult, right? Um, if we, if we don't hear the whole interaction, it can, we can miss certain really important parts. Um, so muting is something that I talk about with the chief on a regular basis.
Accidental muting and intentional muting?
It, there are, uh, reasons for muting that are allowed under policy. You can mute to discuss like, uh, potential coaching or discipline, that's something that's protected. Um, they also have a tactical mute, um, where if they are discussing tactics that they don't necessarily want released to the public, that's, that's a reason for muting. Sometimes, uh, this is human nature, I don't, I don't necessarily ding people for this, but, um, you mute and, and then you forgot you muted. And then you go have an interview with a suspect or a victim and you miss that whole thing, right? So my, my, my preference, you know, I'm in a perfect, in my perfect world, would be for muting to not happen and then for that to be dealt with at a later date. So if it's, if it's being released for trial or for public records request or something like that, that that editing would go in then, it's a, it's a difficult conversation, it's nuanced, there's, um, resources that would go into that, right? Um, so I think for the most part, uh, the body warrant is used effectively, thoroughly, capably. Um, and it also gets turned on every time automatically that the lights and sirens get turned on, which is extremely beneficial as well, um, so.
If I could, uh, shift gears to the, uh, uh, civilian complaint side. There have been, um, the public portal, there have been changes. Or what changes or hiccups have, uh, have you seen with the, the, with the new public portal? Um, or what improvements have you seen and, um, what gaps still exist? What, what, what's on your wishlist for that public portal?
Well, uh, the public portal was fully online in January of, of 2023. So last year was more of the work of getting it set up, but the problems that we saw that led to bringing that on were a lot of our folks who, who come to us with complaints are not always at the same address, they don't always have a phone that works. Um, and so being able to communicate with folks about what happened with their complaint has gotten, is, is very difficult at times. We get a whole lot of returned mail, we get phone calls that don't go anywhere. Um, and so that's been a gap that I wanted to address with the public portal. Um, so now, since January, folks can log in, they can see the status of their complaint, we can put letters into that, into that system, so they can know, okay, someone from EPD is. We can put letters into that, into that system so they can know, okay, someone from EPD is going to be contacting you about your complaint. Um, this is where we are. We need more information, stuff, stuff like that. We can do that through, through this online portal that we can even do it with anonymous uh complainants. So that's, it's significantly improved how our communication goes. Um, and I'm looking forward to talking about it more in our 2023 report.
There are frequent flyers, both those who are giving or making the complaints and those who are being complained about?
Yes.
Both?
Um, I think, I mean, more, we, you know, we get 300 and some complaints per year. So definitely some of those are from repeat folks. We definitely have a couple of employees who pop up, who pop up more regularly than others as well.
Of the 300 complaints, the fact that 14 generated allegations of misconduct, that's pretty tremendous.
Mm-hmm, it is.
And zero uh, uh fatalities or deadly force incidents
Always wonderful.
is commendable.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a question about the anonymity, and this might be my, my final question is I, I, I don't want to monopolize everyone's time. But uh, in regards to the complaint system, I, I appreciate and respect the anonymity, anonymity, but I also am keenly aware of the importance of, of data collection that ultimately drives positive changes. For example, are there places that in your portal where we might ask uh racial or gender identity uh, uh, or sexual orientation, uh socioeconomic status? Are, are folks who are complaining, um, are they uh business owners, students, unhoused residents, persons of color? Are they um, are they residents of Eugene? Or are they visiting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, are they, you know, what part of town do they live in?
Sure.
What you, do, do, do you collect any of that data? Or, and if not, do you see a value in collecting that data?
I, I love data. I love all data. Um, so yes, but no, I think, um, so our online portal does allow for folks to be anonymous and they can self-report demographic data, uh, address, um, all kinds of, they, that's all available for them to fill in should they choose to. Um, when people call us, we ask for addresses. We don't always ask for demographic information because we have had positive and negative experiences there. Um, but I do agree, and I, and I think one of the things that I, we are definitely working towards is collecting more, more of that type of data so we can see, you know, is this a whatever ward problem? Is this a downtown weekend nights problem, um, all of that, all that kind of stuff? So our, our database that we share with EPD is actually really wonderful in a lot of ways. And one of them is that we can, we can sort of look at it by where is this incident happening? Like where did the contact happen? Um, we can look at where is this person, what is their home address? Where are they um complaining from, as, as long as they have an address? Um, but yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of different data collection. We're always trying to do it better. Um, and I think the portal does uh assist us in that.
Thank you. My final 27 seconds. For the folks who are watching who may not know, what's the quick easy phone number to call? Um, or where can they find you on City of Eugene's website?
Sure. Uh, it's eugene-or.gov backslash police auditor. Um, and there's also five four one six eight two five zero one six is our office line.
Six eight two five zero.
Five zero one six.
Thank you so much. Uh, Jennifer and then Mike.
Thank you. So first of all, I just say how thankful I am that we have this system here in our town and to our uh CRV members, just your willingness to be on this, this group. I'm sure it's not easy sometimes, and we appreciate you guys being there and, and being witnesses to, to what's going on. I had just a few clarifications um for Leah. So you mentioned the DEI assessment and in the report, it's not specific, but it sounds like city staff is gonna help you do that. Is that what you said?
Yeah, so um we were looking for an outside person to do an audit and then kind of kicking around different ideas of who might be best of, a good fit to do that work. Um, and then a lot of things were happening last year. And so, um, but we, we, I saw that in the report and was like, oh man, we need to come back to a focus on that. So Lindsay met with the equity and um community engagement folks, and they, that's all in their wheelhouse. And so we're working with them on sort of a, a scope of work and how do we do this in a way that um they can give us some good insight into how we can be more accessible and inclusive.
That is fantastic. Um, uh, so you also mentioned um the new state rules around deadly force investigations and how you hadn't been able to go through that process. Are, is there a way for you to be able to get information on how that's gonna work without us having to do it? So, because hopefully we won't have one for a while. And it would, I would, you know, I'm wondering if we're gonna be able to learn more about it before.
That's a really good question. I actually, I hadn't considered the idea of doing like a public records request for an input investigation. That's always a route, right? Um, I don't know, I don't know how successful I'd be on that route, but I could always try. Um, I, uh, there was, uh, in, in January of this year, there was an incident of deadly force. So um I will be able to see something relatively soon. No one was hurt, no one was injured, no one died in that. Um, and so that's always uh my preferred outcome, obviously. Um, so I, I am looking forward though to looking through that report and seeing how it had, how it reflects those changes from state law.
Okay. That is all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say um thank you all for the reports and most especially for the work that you do. It's a tremendous uh, uh asset in our community to be able to say we enhanced the relationship between the police department and the community at large with some hard work. And it's, it is, and we're thankful that you guys are there. Um, mine is somewhat of a strange question. If I'm uh disappointed for some reason in some area of life and to the point where I have a complaint about it, it, it occurs to me that that's often when my expectation of what I've received doesn't match up at all with the reality of what I received, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And from a certain extent, that's my fault because I expected X and got Y, right?
Mm-hmm.
My question is this, from your perspective, how often do complaints not match up with the reality of what the service is capable of being? I know these are probably all mostly service complaints.
Yeah.
But what percentage of complaints fit that description where somebody expects something that's just crazy? Like, like what's possible?
Yeah, that's a, I like how you ask for a percentage. Just make it really hard question. Thank you. Um, but no, I
I ask those.
You do. I appreciate it. I do. Um, I think, you know, as you were saying this, it, it falls into line with more of a policy complaint for me, right? If someone calls in and they're like, I expected them to show up, you know, I was in a car accident and no one was injured and no one came and took a police report. Like that is a very common, um, like the expectation is here and it's just never gonna happen.
Yeah.
Right? Um, so I think the, I'm gonna try to look really quick, but the 25 policy complaints that we got last year, we're all kind of, I mean, in my recollection, we're all kind of in that area. Um, I think a fair amount of what we do is education, and I, we walk a fine line where I do not want, I don't think it's appropriate for someone from my office to be explaining police practices in general, like this is what police do. But I can facilitate that conversation and I can say, hey, I've been doing this for 13 years. And what I see is this is something that continuously happens and, or there's a policy and we'll have someone to call and talk to you about the policy, right? So I think there is a whole lot of education around this is what's uh possible and this is what's not maybe possible. And I understand your frustration um and where you're coming from.
But I knew answer my follow-up, which is how do you usually handle it? So thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate that. No, no percentage though.
I, I'll get back to you.
Yeah. The 25% is true. I, I got that.
I mean math on a whim. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Emily, one more quick comment.
I just, I wanted to say I appreciate that you use the neutral pronoun. It, it still catches me a little bit surprised, especially because the singular and plural, but um it's kind and it certainly keeps the N and M D. So thank you and yeah, keep those body cameras on.
Yes.
Thanks.
And um I just want to make one last comment that sort of brings it back to Alan's original comment question about the school shootings and the school shooting training and just comment, compliment Beatrice on her public safety form because school shootings were a big topic at that public safety forum and how valuable it was for people to be able to hear a discussion in Spanish in their own language about what the processes were and how the school district would handle it. And so really another kudos to you, Beatrice, for the really phenomenal forum, and it was very much top of mind for the parents who attended, so.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, and I think with that, um, do we have to, do we have to approve this report? No, we don't have to do anything. We don't, we just, we don't have to formally accept it. Okay. All right, then we are good. Thank you so very much. It was great to have you. Thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you, and I should say thank you for shifting us around in the schedule so we could get our civilian folks out on time, so.
Thank you. Oh. Okay, I think we're getting assembled for our, thank you very much for, we're a little bit running late for our second item, and I'll turn it over to the Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, really excited to be here today to have a discussion about the Fire Marshal's Office, and I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Caven to make some introductions.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Council, for uh inviting us today to give some updates on what we've been working on in the Fire Marshal's Office uh over the last year. We've undertaken some reorganization. There's still some work underway. Uh, but most importantly, we were able to work with the City of Springfield to reclassify one of the positions in the office to establish a deputy chief fire marshal position. We haven't had a, a permanent fire marshal uh in place for a number of years. Uh, the office has experienced some challenges associated with that. Um, and we've also, through the CSI and then some investment in the City of Springfield, also added life safety inspectors. So people whose primary job it is to do some critical inspection work in coordination with our business community. So uh without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over and introduce to you all Deputy Chief Travis Worthington. Uh, he's been a fantastic asset to the organization already. Uh, he's got a lot of energy and his ability to collaborate with uh players across the communities and in the cities uh has been greatly appreciated, um taking some work off the, the office of the chief. And so Travis, it's all yours.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me and Mayor. There we go. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members, City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office and attendees. Travis Worthington, Fire Marshal's Office, Division of Fire Prevention for Eugene Springfield Fire. Uh, so we do have a presentation regarding update of what we've been accomplishing so far uh this year and since I came into the job in December of this last year, so right at five months going into that. Uh, so we have a small presentation for you here. Uh staffing, so as Chief Caven alluded to, we did have an increase in our staffing. We had some positions that got uh filled and refilled. Uh, this uh kind of outlays for us what the current uh formation of our uh positions are. So we have Deputy Chief Fire Marshal, we have administrative senior specialist. She is one of our new employees as well, an assistant fire marshal who's been in place for a few years. And we had Deputy Fire Marshal, Deputy Fire Marshal, one is a new position, and two new life safety inspectors are the other new positions. So a total of uh 11 uh staff under my division at this point. Uh, some things we've done in improvement in just the last uh few months is we've revised our hours. So coming out of COVID, we did not have our office open on Fridays, which was limiting to serving the customers and the public effectively. So we reorganized how we did our hours and structured how staff attended what days. So we now have coverage five days a week during business hours, eight to five. Um, we've increased our efficiency by providing service to the customers in that aspect. We've also embarked on reopening our fire stations for fire station tours to do public education. We've worked with many stakeholders to get that criteria established so that we're able to start providing that public education components that we were missing during the COVID uh cycle. Uh, onto one of our programs that we really take into heart and are moving aggressively, getting enacted and working uh for the community is our vacant, abandoned and unsafe buildings policy. This does go right in line with Eugene City Code, I believe it's eight dot zero zero five. Aren't you proud of me that I knew that?
Very.
Regarding dangerous buildings. Uh, so during times of recession or economic downturn, we see statistically that uh unoccupied vacant abandoned buildings can become a real issue, especially for fire services. Uh, these type of buildings are the leading cause of firefighter injury and death. So we have made it uh our mission to start identifying these buildings, hold building owners accountable for securing these buildings and making sure that they are making the building safe. Um, going through establishing this policy has proved very beneficial to us. We've actually had a lot of interest around the state. Monday, I'm actually speaking at the State uh Oregon Fire Marshals Association Conference where I'm presenting how to start going about getting your policy and your community established and what the department can do for this. This brings us back to operations, working with the Fire Marshal's Office to ensure the community of not only our community, but the first responders that serve them. Um, we look at this to identify the unsafe buildings, secure those buildings, remove any hazardous materials, chemicals, biohazard materials, maintain their fire rated assemblies and fire protection systems. We'll be instituting a placarding system so that when uh a fire crew arrives at the scene of an emergency, if it's a, you know, abandoned or unsafe building, they will be able to look at the placards on the building, determine what that is. Along with this becomes a, a survey that we do and are conducting with our fire marshal staff that identifies those uh hazards and how they can either avoid them or not take that under consideration when they make entry. So it doesn't limit our staff from doing that work. What it does is it gives them information to be successful and remain uninjured so they can serve the community. Uh, so essentially, if you look at the plaque and we have right there, if you see an S, that's gonna mean the building is safe. Uh, if it's C, it'd be caution, and U is unsafe. This not only helps our first responders, but also can help other community departments understand, oh, that's maybe a building I should or should not be making entry into. So identifying that is a big, um, a big part of what we're gonna be doing this year in the Fire Marshal's Office. Website update, so some other things tying into what we're doing and trying to make changes to be more efficient in what we do in the Fire Marshal's Office. Updated the staff directory with our new positions, uh posted our new hours of operation to make sure the public understands what that is. Gave that new criteria for station tours and public education efforts. Um, fire protection system impairments, this is something that has been required in the fire code, but we weren't doing very effectively. So we've established an impairment system notification for us. So let's say your building is going to have to take its sprinkler system down for the day for repairs. Well, they need to notify us so that if we have a response there, we know we may need to assign another truck company. We may need to assign other resources to respond appropriately. We may have more people than normal in the building that need rescue. So this uh impairment notification system plays to us. It notifies police dispatch, fire dispatch, our station captains and battalion chiefs in the field so they can pivot real time to what's being impaired in our systems. Uh, with that, a fire watch directive, so sometimes, hey, my fire alarm's down. Well, post-COVID supply chain is showing that we're having a big delay in getting those parts in. So sometimes a customer may have to have a fire watch, and they need to be given directive and how that's carried out and how they report that to us to make sure they're following the code requirements. So we have that new policy directive up and going on our website as well, very interactive. I'm proud to say it, then included in this update, but yesterday, we actually had our first annual fire protection vendor summit. So I had 54 uh vendors from um around companies in the area who service fire alarms, hood suppression systems, sprinkler systems. We met, I had a discussion, Q and A, made them aware of the notification process and what we're doing in our office and heard any concerns that they had. So one of the um, one of the vendors, you know, provided breakfast, so it was a really nice few hours. We had it at Fire Headquarters, and they were very happy with that, the fact that they were able to meet with us, speak with us and communicate with us for the future. So we're really happy that that took place. Um, here's some statistics we'll be able to pull for you from 2022. Realizing that coming out of COVID, um, my staff, some of my staff needed training on some of our software. So we had to kind of backtrack initially and do some training with all the staff to make sure they were properly recording inspections and investigations. Uh, what we've came to is 2022, 546 inspections, 185 permits issued. Fire Marshal's Office issues a whole slew of different types of operational permits. Some are informational, some are so we can inspect, sometimes it's a plan or be for a special event, hazardous materials. There's about 56 of those permits in the fire code. Uh, identified 1,092 code violations, uh conducted 250 fire investigations, uh 294 hazmat permits issued, and had 2,546 public education event attendees in different pub ed. So that's pretty good for 2022 as far as the number of pub ed event attendees. I pulled some more numbers that are not included in your packet uh regarding where we can currently stand. So to put it in perspective, 546 inspections last year, as of the day, we are at 421 already. So you can see that we're on track to more than double the number of inspections we conducted last year. Uh, investigations, we did 250 last year. We have currently conducted 116. That's gonna, if stays on track, we're gonna show close to a 15 to 20% increase in investigations over last year at current pace. Um, that is a lot of good information there. We expect to see those numbers continue to climb as we continue to revise our standard operating procedures, our processes, training our personnel to be more efficient, working with other stakeholders. I anticipate we can get the number of inspections uh up dramatically so we can make a more safer community for everyone. Um, lastly, thank you. We're here to serve the community. We're vested in working with stakeholders um and developing those relationships and working with the community to make it safer for everyone, both departmental and citizens. So at this time, I have nothing else to report, pass it on to Chief Caven.
Take one before we go to questions. Just wanted to highlight the work that the office is doing, the investments made through CSI and the life safety inspectors, but really just getting the office up to staff. If you watched the news last night, you saw the City of Portland deal with a pretty significant four alarm apartment fire. A lot of things going on there, both from staff uses, but multiple rescues. The work that they do help prevent situations like that, help make sure that rescue systems are in place or the ability to evacuate is in place. And prevention is a very hardest thing to quantify, right? We can talk about how many we hit, but what did we prevent? If we were to experience an apartment fire similar to the one in Portland, it would just exponentially impact our housing crisis in the City of Eugene. And so we're relying upon the Fire Marshal's Office, they're building their, their code updates and their coordination with our vendors for fire protection systems to really expand the overall safety of the community. So we appreciate their, their work, it's having an impact already.
Thank you so much, I actually appreciate that final perspective on, on, it's sometimes hard to really quantify prevention because it just didn't happen. So how do you count it? But I, I also really wanted to just comment, I, this idea of placarding the buildings, it seems like it just makes so much sense and what a, what an incredibly important and kind of a simple solution. But somebody has to do it and, and recognize the value of it, so thank you. I have a whole line of people, so I got Mike, then Alan, then Randy.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Jennifer, okay.
Thank you for the presentation and all the hard work.
Thank you.
In the last month or so, councils had an awful lot of conversations that have touched on at one point or another, whether it's downtown or urban renewal or whether it's whatever, about the need for us to look at an expanded increase, increasing faster the number of units to rent or buy in our community, living units. We need more apartments, we need more houses. As we go through that process of trying to do more and see more places for people to live built downtown, from the planning to be safe perspective, what sort of advice would you give council about the considerations we'd have with regard to density downtown of housing or location or, I mean, are there, are those sort of considerations relevant to the work of preparation and being prepared?
So yes, that is highly important for us to be successful in our mission. So as we continue to grow and expand both upward and outward, it's going to be imperative that we work together early on, especially with developers and the council, to make sure that what you're wanting to do, we have the ability to meet that need should there be an emergency. So sometimes it's, well, we can't really, you know, make the roads bigger, but maybe there's some other fire protection systems we can include in the development and building of that structure that would make it more inherently safe and give us more time to do our work. So there's a lot of alternatives we can look at, we do that on a regular basis. In Oregon, it's a little different than other states where if I make a recommendation for a sprinkler system or fire alarm system, excuse me, that has to go through the building official. But I have good relationships so far with the building officials in both jurisdictions and they are open to hearing that. We have two Fire Marshals embedded in the building department in Eugene and one in Springfield. And they are on those land use reviews, we do make recommendations. I think the biggest thing I'd ask for going forward is iterate that we need to be part of the conversation and that our voice does need to be heard, that on the front end, it's a lot easier to fix something than on the back end. We don't want to get down the road and invest all this money in development, time and energy and then say, oh, that's not going to work. That's where we have issue and that's where a lot of heartburn comes from some of our customers. So push to include us early on would be the biggest advice I'd have and let us be part of that conversation.
And I'd add, just, just on that planning component, as the council considers, we're seeing a lot of vertical, you know, in downtown and out Franklin. And there's a response time component to that, it takes us longer to actually get to the patient's bedside to get to a fire, it takes more people. And so including planning for the next fire stations to serve that. Where we were plotted, we were plotted in a low rise bedroom community model. And so we're going to need investments on that side too.
Thank you guys.
Interesting, thank you, Alan then Randy.
Thanks, Mayor. When do you put the placard on a building that's vacant or abandoned? Only when, not every single vacant and abandoned building has a placard on it.
So part of that is defining what the building actually is and we've actually taken those steps to build those into our fire code. For example, if a building's abandoned, that means there's no vested, you know, interest from an owner. If the building is vacant, there is a vested owner interest. If it's transitional, meaning I'm moving from one owner to the next, we've defined that in our policy in our survey. So if it's a building that is an unsafe building for the community, like we recently had, a structure that's burned out, it's structurally unsound, we want to make sure we get that boarded up, placarded, fenced immediately so that we don't get unhoused community going in there, getting hurt, injured, posing other threats to the system. So the sooner the better, correct. A building that's occupied, that's just vacant, that has a vested owner may not necessarily need to be placarded. We're more focused on those unsafe abandoned buildings to get those placarded ASAP. So sooner the better, we're typically doing with my investigators, I've trained them to do that. If they go to an investigation, to say a house fire and they determine the building is structurally unsound, it's unsafe, we work immediately that day to get it boarded up and secured and then go through the survey process to evaluate the damage level and then placard it accordingly.
So it's mostly after a fire or an incident?
After a fire, after an incident, it could be a building that's just been sitting abandoned for a while and it's be, being occupied by unhoused and maybe has had some new structural issues or other concerns to make it unsafe. So as those come into play, there, we've had several that have been referred to us from the community, we've had several refer to us from police, we've had several come right from operations where, hey, we were out on this medical call and wow, this is a really bad situation if we did have an incident here. So we're responding to those and going out and immediately doing the surveys and taking action to secure them and make them safe.
It should be noted, that's a new program, that's why you're, I think part of your question comes from where would you see him, have you seen him? We have just initiated.
The most recent one, 4540 Commerce, which was the old gymnasium gymnastics, I think was what that was. We had a small fire in there, a warming fire from unhoused who had gotten into that facility. If you go by there now, that does have the U placards all over the building. So that's an example of the building we got secured effectively with the owner's help.
I like your fun facts to know and tell. Of the fire investigations, actually going up in fire investigations is probably not best metric, you want that to go down actually, right? Because that means there's less fires, but what are the top three causes of fires?
Cooking, number one typically, unhoused, cooking and then unhoused warming is what we're seeing is trending right now.
Right. And actually cooking on electrical stoves outpaces like four to one fires from.
Yeah, cooking kitchen fires, correct.
Which is ironic because it's open flame versus electric stove. How does the inspection to violations process work? How does that, when, when do you do an inspection and then how does it relate to violation, then what happens?
I'm glad you opened that door. So we have been evaluating what we inspect and how frequently we inspect it. We have what we call target hazards in the fire inspection world. So an H and R block in a strip mall is a lower risk to us than a nightclub bar that could be fully occupied with persons that are intoxicated. So also a school has a higher hazard or a assisted living or skilled nursing facilities have higher hazards. These are ones that we should and are required to inspect annually. We need to be in there annually and inspect those. Any violations that are noted are immediately reported to that person, they're given a timeframe based on severity of that violation to get them corrected. And in some cases, if we don't get compliance, we go through the, you know, process to get that resolved through the city attorney's office. I'd say nine times out of 10, we do never have to go that far, it's just that one case occasionally that gets pushed into civil activity. As far as the other ones that, when should we do those? We're working currently on a program to have a self-inspection. So if it's like that H and R block business in the strip mall, you know, we only need to really look at that eyes on with an inspector every three years. So they can do self-inspection and report those to us the other two years. Again, we see it in person every three years to verify the information, the reporting is accurate. This helps us to really focus on what we need to be looking at and making sure community safety overall is worked out.
And if you guys record a or note a violation, it's the building owner's responsibility to fix it and let you know?
Correct.
And, and then if they don't by the date, then it triggers the.
The next level.
Action level of that.
Correct.
On the hazmat permits, I, I know that, that a lot of rural fire departments don't have hazmats visions. So is that only within the City of Eugene and then how does this work in River Road, Santa Clara where there's a hopscotch of county, city?
So most, all jurisdictions in Oregon adopt the Oregon Fire Code as adopted by the State Fire Marshal's Office and they'll operational permit options are built in there for hazmat. You're right, some rural communities don't have a need for it, whereas metro communities like ours do need that, absolutely. As far as that goes, I know our seven contract communities work and discussions with them now, does that contract actually include fire prevention services? We have reported out there to conduct the investigations because we're statutory required to conduct the origin and cause investigations of any fires we respond to. So I know we respond a fire in a contract district. Yeah, we're required to do the investigation, but do we do pub education, do we do fire inspections of those areas? That's the discussion we're having now with those contract communities.
Yeah, under the risk bonds we were talking about last week, Randy and I were talking about the big oil tank facility out in North Eugene and, and it's not within the city limits. But if the lane rural fire would be the first responders, but they don't have a hazmat unit, so we actually respond to that from the hazmat perspective, right?
Yeah, yeah, so the actual hazardous materials response side of this, we're the regional provider from here to Grant County, 300 miles east, right? And so we take on that responsibility, it's incrementally funded by the state, they're looking at ways to imagine how to deal with the very same problem, how to adequately fund our ability to watch and respond to hazardous materials incident because it's outdated. The program is funded by petroleum load fees. And, you know, as you know, as Oregon works to limit petroleum load fees, then funding for those programs go down, so how do we make sure that we shore that up?
Yeah, so does, does the, does that facility in particular have a permit with the City of Eugene or is it with the other, other fire?
Would be with Lane.
Lane rural.
Fire Authority, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, I have Randy then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation and I am really grateful to see some investment back into the Fire Marshal's Office. It's been understaffed, underfunded, underperforming for years and it's always better to prevent a tragedy before it happens rather than respond in the midst of it. I'm very excited about the placarding system, but I also know placards get stolen, defaced, removed, damaged. Is this information also going into your pre-emergency planning and the 911 CAD system?
Correct, it is.
Good.
And they're being flagged and notified and then we actually required in our policy and in our fire code amendment that they be at an elevated position so they're not easily stolen or removed. And then again, if we're pursuing placarding, more than likely we've pursued to have the site fenced and in some cases, double fenced. So yeah, we're working to make sure it's really secure and it gets identified and remains identified.
Good, I, I appreciate that. And the Kinder Morgan Oregon Tank Farm that you were referring to, Alan, there's state code that comes into play there too. And it's, it's actually a pretty well managed. Yeah. System, I, I've mentioned before, I'm sitting on the DEQ Advisory Committee looking at seismic upgrades for the three major tank farms, both fuel storage facilities in Oregon, most of them, the two are up in the Portland area and then we have one down here. So we are, we are involved in that. Chief Caven, could you kind of give us just an idea, and, and by the way, I know firefighters like to share, you each have your own mic up there.
Close.
I had to get a little shot in that.
I wasn't going to point that out.
Could you just give us a little idea, you know, we're, we're talking about resources, we're talking about, you know, getting the Fire Marshal's Office back to a functional level, which is exciting. And by the way, I've heard good things since you've been on board chief, so thank you for choosing us. Could you talk a little bit about what happens with densification? And what that's going to mean as far as responses, especially with, with high rise and what it takes to marshal resources aloft?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a couple different aspects, right? Is increase in density is just increase in regular call volume that we're going to experience. But what you have to grapple with is an understanding and planning for the vertical response time. The amount of people it takes to carry the sheer amount of equipment we carry with us now, whether it's as paramedics or as firefighters and the complexities that come with that. So then FPA standard for a high risk, high hazard building like a high rise calls for 43 firefighters on the scene. We don't staff that many firefighters in the City of Eugene every day. So anyone fire is going to overwhelm our system. And so those are all the, the planning components, I mean, we lean on the Fire Marshal's Office to do as many engineering advancements as they can with those investments, but you know, challenges are location, access, traffic, all of that complicate, extend our, our response times. We're making some changes now in just how crews report arrival on scene. Meaning as they go aloft that they're, they're tagging how long it took them to get to that patient's side because that's the frequency of our calls, but also help inform, how long is it going to take us to get there on a fire? As we get more of those buildings and build that data in.
Could you explain why in a fire scenario, the elevators are not used?
So for a number of reasons, the elevators are challenged, are not reliable. We have to proceed amongst the most reliable route of travel. That's the stairwell so that we can measure and see what's going on in the building as, as we move aloft. And again, it's, you know, we're going to be fighting with people trying to evacuate, whether it's for stairwells, whether it's for their normal means of egress through the elevators. But we typically in a fire scenario are not going to utilize the elevator system.
So not to get your daily steps in.
Well, and I, I think it's important to understand that because that not only adds to response time, you know, at the fire scene or emergency scene, but also just in the sheer physical exertion to get the equipment you need aloft. And it's just, that's why every fire engine, every truck company in the system is part of the larger system. It's more than just the immediate area that they respond to and it's also the response reliability of, and backup. And let's see, I think, I think that's, that's all I had, good job, I'm excited to see this happen. I also know that you've been very active in shutting down some vacated buildings that were being squatted in, which, you know, we, we lost two people in Springfield here a while back that were doing just that and built a warming fire inside the structure. And it happens, it happens across our country and it's, it's a tragedy that we're trying to deal with, with our unhoused population especially, so thank you.
I think it'd be important to note on that concept, right? We're talking about this year, this unsafe building, right? That would tell us all to stay out. That does not mean that our fire department is not going to aggressively search those occupancies, given our situation, we're going to assume people are in there and we're going to, you know, risk a lot to save a lot is, is what we say. And so that placard is really ability to reconcile what is in there that's the hazard to inform our incident commander, but also trigger the knowledge that we should call additional resources to the scene because it is a high risk search operation and we want to have people in place to help evacuate our firefighters if they get themselves in trouble. So unsafe does not mean that we are not going to do our job, it's just a tool to help inform us.
Thank you. Jennifer and then Matt and then Emily.
Yeah, thank you, I'm so glad you guys are here, this is so informative. You know, I don't know that most of us think a lot about what the Fire Marshals do on a regular basis. You know, we kind of have very high level understanding, so this is extremely helpful. I'm so looking forward to you coming back and giving us more updates now that your team has expanded and you're going to be able to do more. It's just great, most of my questions are already answered because the gentleman before me asked all the questions. So my only other question is, my own ignorance, do you investigate every fire or do you pick and choose?
No, we are required by the code to investigate every cause, origin and fire. So every, every fire that we respond to, we have to do origin, cause. Now, if we have a determination that there's possibly an arson involved or an intentionally set fire, we work directly with the EPD arson task force there to work that out. So they would do the criminal aspect of that, we would do the origin and cause. Yes, it's every fire that we go to, we have to investigate.
And those would be counted in this 250 though, or would those be on top of this 250, the ones that EPD is involved in?
Right, if they do a separate case off of ours, using everything we responded to investigation wise, they may have additional numbers on top of this.
Oh, okay, wow, well, that's quite a few. Well, thank you, that's my only question, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt and then Emily and then Mike.
Thanks, Mayor. Travis, you concluded your report with gratitude and thanks and I'll start my series of questions with gratitude and thanks to you and the chief and to the whole department. I can't state how much I in the community value and appreciate your service, thank you. The, the rating codes, the safe, caution, unsafe, how far along are you in the implementation of those?
how far along are you in the implementation of those? Is, are you just rolling that out? Is it, has it been up and running for?
About three months is what we, we've dived in. Um, so we have been pursuing that since the guest house incident in Springfield, was when we saw this is really going to be an issue in our community. We really need to start aggressively addressing this.
What percent? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we've started, we've started just there. That was our starting point. So just three months now. And we've been making this a living SOP. So as we do a portion, I have the training program laid out. I have the SOP that's constantly being developed and you know, morphed as to how that's going to be better serving stakeholders and then working with city attorney's office and other stakeholders that we have to directly parlay with to get this.
An SOP.
Standard operating procedure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we love our acronyms.
Randy knew, I didn't.
Right. So we've done to date, matter of fact, I sent out one today. So we've done eight of these surveys so far and these were either referrals from the community, referrals from operations or post-fire that we saw that the building was damaged beyond repair and structurally unstable.
Okay, eight. Ballpark, how, what, what percentage of the, um, abandoned or vacant buildings do that, do those eight represent?
A small portion.
Very slight, less than ten percent?
Less than ten percent.
Copy that. Are you just looking at commercial or is it commercial and residential or both?
It could be both.
Can be both. There are, uh, other municipalities, uh, I, I've mentioned from the DIES, uh, the city of Vancouver has a, 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 a tax, an EHT, an empty home tax uh, for vacant homes, uh, that I believe, or somewhere between a one and three percent tax on the, on the property value for underutilized homes. I, I want to say city of San Francisco has a, uh, a commercial unused property tax. And I wonder if, if we were to explore that, um, this might be a, a better question for our city attorney. If, if, if that's something that could be in our municipality's wheelhouse to explore, that could help uh, bolster or fund, uh, fire prevention service.
I'd have to look into that. I haven't, I've never looked into that question. It could be actually a question for the revenue team as well.
Great.
And we're engaged with a vendor right now and a fee analysis around all the different types of fees that we're utilizing in the fire department. Um, and so that's when we can make sure that the fire prevention group is looking at what the possibilities for those recommendations might be.
And we're currently working with the city manager's office updating our fee schedule and I have included as part of our policy that operational permit to do that survey. So at least covers my staff time to conduct the survey to get that paperwork completed.
In, in your, um, in, in your work on the national scene, what, in, in other municipalities about our size, what percentage of the, um, of the buildings in the community are vacant or underutilized or abandoned?
It ranges depending on region of the country, like in Los Angeles, that's upwards of sixty percent. In other areas of the country going on the east coast, there may be a twenty to thirty percent.
Wow, that's wild.
You want a more specific, you know, data, I could get that for you.
Well, uh, now I'll hone in on this. Of, of that, whether it's sixty percent on the west coast in Southern California or it's twenty percent on the east coast, how do the percentages break down after, uh, other departments, uh, do an SOP? How many, what, what percentage are deemed safe? Ballpark, what percentage are deemed of that kind of cautionary, middle of the road? What percentage are deemed unsafe?
I couldn't be specific. The majority of the time, buildings are deemed to be caution, like there's something in the building that we need to take caution and consideration. Um, I'd say about fifty percent of times they're caution, about forty percent of the time, they're going to be considered unsafe. And then there's only a few, about ten percent that actually meet that safe category.
That's an alarming and sobering note. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Emily.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here and telling us about all this. I'm, I'm really happy to hear that your services have increased. We know about the firefighters and first responding and rescuing us and we depend on you. But to prevent us needing to be rescued, that's really great. So I'm glad you're looking to expand and, and make this city safer for all of us and for the first responders. Um, then just one practical question. When I'm in a business and the exit door opens in instead of out, find that really scary. Is that something I should call you about?
You could. If the building's already received, uh, certificate of occupancy from the building official and it's an existing building, we do the annual maintenance inspections of that. However, typically if you have a door that swings inward, it's because it's below the occupancy number to require them to swing outward. So only assemblies and some hazard classifications are actually required to swing outward.
There's a building I know that has a stair step and then the door is there and it opens in, you know, and you won't be able to open it in if people are coming down. So.
Existing buildings, depending on the code where it was constructed, that's what we have to go by. So that was very much allowed in earlier codes. So.
I won't go in the building then.
Could I win that battle? No.
All right, Mike, one last comment.
Just a real quick one. Um, I I appreciate all the work with hazard mitigation and pre-emergency planning. I think the more we do with that, we save lives and it's great work. I appreciate it. I've seen recently some information and video and so forth about what happens when you mix lithium and water and the explosions that come and the fire that comes. So my question is, are you doing work already or at what point, at what concentration level of electric vehicles in our community? Do you have concern, if any, about that as a potential hazard?
So we've been having conversations and, and watching nationally, um, as these fires happen. We, we already know the small scale lithium batteries that don't have a lot of regulation in their construction, how rapidly they can start a house fire.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's a known problem, hard to deal with. The vehicles, that's another emerging challenge of, you know, how much water does it take? Upwards of thirty thousand gallons of water. Then becomes a question, what do you do with that hazardous water? I mean, we are very protective of our waterways here in the Northwest. And so um, our discussions surround, you know, how do we let that burn? And protect the exposures around it, very much how we handle fires in electrical substations, you know, isolate, deny entry and protect the exposures.
As the numbers grow, when should we worry?
Uh, I think it's an emerging issue, right? I, I wish I could say exactly what number, how, how we're going to mitigate that. Um, we have yet to confront one um, here locally that's overcome our abilities to deal with it. But we know it's only a matter of time. There's a lot on the road. Um, and we have some very challenging, high-risk areas that we need to protect against that fire where just letting it burn might not be an option in the South Hills, given the fire threat. So.
Thanks.
On the charger aspect, there's been a lot of emerging, you know, statistics that are saying we got to be careful because those fires are on the rise because you have somebody who buys a new energy powered vehicle and then they install the the charger themselves and they're not an electrician and they do it wrong and we're having a lot of fires being started from that. So I think education is going to be a big component of being successful in our community. Educate them, what the process is, what steps should they take if they're going to move from a fossil fuel vehicle to an electric vehicle? How they're going to charge that, we need to be cognizant of that. And also how we deploy those charging stations throughout the community.
Thank you.
One more quickie. Yeah, we're, we're late, but.
Uh, just ever so quick, I just wanted to point out that according to the National Fire Protection Association, every year there are more than five thousand gas station fires that are reported around the United States, uh, resulting in forty-eight civilian injuries, uh, two deaths and more than twenty million dollars in property damage. The more you know.
No place to say.
Believe it or not, Oregon is lower on that scale.
I think Oregon may be the lowest.
Because that we pump the gas for them, right?
That's right.
Not for long.
So, uh, I want to thank you very much for this. I think this session is, was both incredibly informative and also very encouraging and, um, and, um, we're very appreciative of all the work you do. So thank you very, very much for taking the time to talk to us and it was very helpful.
Thanks for having me.
Your turn.